Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of number six, 2023. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time before we go to normal business, I'd like to take a moment and pay our respects to the eighteen victims from October 25th at this time. Trisha Azlin.
William Frank Brackett.
Peyton Brewer Ross.
Thomas Ryan Conrad.
Michael R. Delarius II.
Max A. Hathaway.
Brian M. McFallan.
Keith D. McNair.
Ronald G. Moran.
Joshua A. Seal.
Arthur Fred Strout.
Stephen M. Vazella.
Jason Adam Walker.
Joseph Lawrence Walker.
Lucille M. Violet.
Robert E. Violet.
William A. Young.
Aaron Young.
Thank you, everybody. First on the agenda, or next on the agenda, we have one consent item. I'll adjutant motion at this time?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Moran, second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Passes six zero. Next, we have the minutes of the October 16th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll adjutant motion at this time to approve the minutes.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion for Councilor Walker, second from Councilor Milks. All those in favor? Passes six zero. Next, we also have the minutes of the October 23rd, 2023 Special City Council Meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll adjutant motion at this time?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Councilor Walker, and second by Councilor Milks. All those in favor? Passes six zero. Also, just for the clerk, Councilor Rick Whiting is on excused absence tonight. Moving on, we're going to go to Communications, Presentations, and Recognitions. And I'd like to start off, if I could. So, the unique cities of Lewiston and Auburn are only separated by a river, but they're interconnected by generations of family who grew up, went to school, played sports, married, worked, remained in either city to raise their own families. And youth in both communities have and continue to play sports in both cities. And that culminate with the Battle of the Bridges, which happened on Wednesday. So, we had a very busy, uh, Sport Wednesday, if you would, within Lewiston and Auburn. Cousins and friends compete in healthy rivalry. And really, in Lewiston and Auburn, everyone is related or knows someone. And that's why the tragedies that took place in Lewiston on Wednesday, October 25th, have been so heartbreaking for our communities. And at this time, I'd like to ask, if I could, have the representatives from Hannaford come and join me in the DS, if I could. And that's Hillary Deco Roy, Director of Operations for Lewiston and Auburn, Todd Pelletier, Store Manager for Lewiston, and Dan Paul, Store Manager from Auburn. If you could just come right up here. And first of all, thank you all very much for being here tonight, but thank you for what you've done. I'd like to just talk a little. Just turn around. Yeah, I know. I forgot. Thankfully, you're not that experienced up here, right? But feeling a sense of community and an overwhelming need to do something, upwards of over three hundred staff from local, state, and out-of-state Hannaford stores met on a Zoom call to discuss how they could help the cities of Lewiston and Auburn. As part of their discussion, they contacted Tri-County Mental Health and the cities of Lewiston and Auburn to determine specific needs. Currently, the city of Lewiston has two Project Support U co-responders who ride along with police and fire and EMS personnel responding to calls. Co-responders are trained in de-escalation and are able to triage and make recommendations and referrals to those who are in need, whether it's medical, mental, substance abuse, or unhoused crisis. The city of Auburn currently has only one Project Support U co-responder. At the recommendation of Tri-County Mental Health Services and based on Auburn's calls for service, it was determined that the city of Auburn needs an additional Project Support U co-responder. We would like to recognize Hannaford employees from across the state for their continued support, and not only through their donations of food and prescription medication, but also through their philanthropic efforts and their generous $110,000 grant to the city of Auburn, which will place a second Project Support U co-responder in our community. On behalf of the city council, city staff, and all the citizens of Auburn, thank you for each, thank each, each one of you, and to all the Hannaford employees for partnering alongside us as we move forward. So please join me in a round of applause for all the Hannaford employees that helped make this happen.
Mandatory mics. We have nothing formally planned. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and this is more about doing the right thing than about recognition, so I'm going to leave it at that, and thank you for having us here to be part of this.
Next, we're going to move on to Communication. Uh, Communication for Special Events Mass Gathering Application for New Year's Eve Auburn. You have anything else?
I have nothing to add on that. They are just a standard application that was submitted.
Okay, so just in case we've all forgotten, New Year's Eve Auburn, I believe it's our fifth year running. Uh, we only took one year pause for COVID. It's going to be a huge event. Again, New Year's Eve, December 31st. So more details of that will come, including the permit, as they do every year. Next, we're going to turn it over to Chief Moen and Chief Chase. They're going to give a presentation on Public Safety Wellness. I'm sorry. Chiefs, if you could also introduce some people on Zoom as well.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, on the screen, we have Dr. Ben Stone, the CEO of Sigma Tactical, and his business manager, Vince Palazzi. And in a few minutes, Dr. Stone's going to be talking on the benefits of one of the projects that we're going to be working on for, uh, this presentation. So, Chief Chase and I have been working on this wellness project for a while now, and it is important for us to understand that, uh, first responders have a high risk of early onset of cardiovascular disease. And that is based upon, uh, the stressors that the jobs entail. Forty-eight percent of at-risk individuals are below the age of forty-two in, uh, first responders. And twenty-five percent are more likely to die from a cardiovascular infarction or stroke than killed in the line of duty. So when we look at our first responders, uh, first responders develop a heart disease at rates that are way beyond the normal civilian. And they develop heart disease at younger ages in the observed civilian populations. And first responders develop this heart disease, and they're absent of some of the clinical markers that are typically present, uh, with the normal onset of normal cardiovascular disease. This early onset heart disease is often undetectable, and Dr. Stone will be talking about the ways they've developed, screenings to be able to pick up on certain genetic markers. And this is important for us because we're talking about cardiovascular screenings and cancer screenings for our first responders. And it's important to understand that Maine has a couple of presumption laws regarding workers' comp and first responders. Uh, the first one being, uh, the cancer law that states that if a firefighter is diagnosed with cancer, uh, it's presumed that they've, uh, got that cancer on the job, and therefore it's covered by workers' comp. And the same for cardiovascular injury disease. If a firefighter is diagnosed with cardiovascular disease or there's a cardiovascular event or injury, then the presumption is that happened, uh, during the course of their job. There's currently legislation before the, um, the state on adding law enforcement to that cardiovascular presumption law as well. So both firefighters and police officers will be covered by the cardiovascular law. So that's important for us as we dive into this wellness project to understand that some of those presumption laws are, are looming above us. So as we look to improve the wellness of our, um, staff, we're looking to reduce our exposure to workers' comp injuries as well. And I'm going to let Dr. Stone give a five-minute overview of Sigma Tactical and their cardiac screening that they're doing to help, uh, save, uh, first responder lives. Dr. Stone?
Excellent. Chief, thanks so much for the introduction, and I want to make this very brief and informative. We started this program in earnest in 2019 with the goal of reducing cardiac disease and mortality events associated with cardiac disease. Public safety, we're talking police and fire, is a very neat profession. The stress, the sleeplessness, the stress injury, the diet, some of the coping mechanisms for the stress that you encounter while doing the job can lead to some very significant downstream illness that you just don't see in private healthcare. You know, just to give you an example, the average life expectancy for a police officer is fifty-seven to sixty years, and they're looking at eighteen to sixty-month life expectancy on retirement. Now, there's a lot of ways that can trigger a mortality event, a lot of circumstances, some of which are outside of our control. The vast majority are cardiac-related. In 2018 to 2019, there was a study published in the Journal of Occupational Environmental Medicine by a gentleman named John Bielani that showed that seventy-one percent of all mortalities were due to illness. And these are individuals that died before civilian life expectancy of age eighty-two. And so there's some massive disparities between traditional risk scoring models that we currently employ in private healthcare and those necessary to detect heart disease in police officers and firefighters at an age where we can do something about it. And that's exactly what Sigma has pioneered. We do a very comprehensive lipid panel, not, not just looking cholesterol, cholesterol quality. We also look at the cardiac inflammatory component that is absolutely responsible for early onset plaque development. It's not cholesterol. It's the conditions of inflammation that can promote plaque development. In a lot of circumstances, in, in many cases, as a matter of fact, you see heart disease in the mid to late thirties in fit-looking men and women with perfect cholesterol and no underlying health illness, no family history, et cetera, et cetera. And they're the ones that are slipping through the cracks of traditional risk scoring models that are currently employed in civilian healthcare. Sigma employs a very comprehensive panel to diagnose and, and help define some of those circumstances with respect to inflammation. We pair that with a carotid ultrasound as a surrogate marker to plaque that's forming in the coronary vasculature. So we do a non-invasive image. It takes just a few minutes, and we can use that as an understanding of what's happening within the carotids as to what might be happening below in the heart. We partner that with a basic exercise test. It's a twelve-lead EKG that is absolutely critical in understanding the advancement of potential ischemic heart disease. Those three diagnostics are absolutely valuable. They paint this complete three-dimensional picture of what's happening with that individual such that we can actually do something about it and getting treatment. Those three tests are incredibly expensive. Healthcare and most health insurances will not cover them unless there's already been an event. Of course, at that point, we're practicing reactive medicine and not proactive medicine. So we're one of the only companies out there in the ether that will actually travel around to municipalities and offer this battery and cadre of diagnostics that can be absolutely critical to determining the state of cardiac risk with inside these, these ages of public safety.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Uh, so you can see that, uh, you know, Sigma has pioneered some testing for first responders when it comes to detecting early onset of cardiovascular disease. And what they're, what they offer is to come onsite here to Auburn, to our first responders, and conduct these assessments and lab screenings, and work with our first responders on, uh, if there are any type of indicators on what the remediation for that can be. And it's important to understand that, you know, this is strictly, uh, important for, extremely important for our first responders as we move forward in, uh, in our jobs. And, you know, I have personal knowledge of Sigma saving lives in Texas. A good friend of mine, Chief Jeff Swaby, from Irving, Texas, had two officers that went through this program. Both officers are very fit, uh, ran marathons, and both were on the brink of widow makers. Um, they were on the brink of a, a traumatic cardiovascular event. And this screening saved their lives. They were able to, um, get ahead of it and have procedures done to be able to circumvent that. Paired with this is cancer screenings, and I'll, uh, let Chief Chase talk to the importance of that.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, yeah, um, I became aware of, uh, Dr. Stone's, um, program at the MMA conference. We invited them to the Maine Chiefs Conference, but we also invite along a company called United Diagnostics Services that does cancer screenings, uh, for firefighters. Um, we'll see from the slides. OSHA and NIOSH have released reports showing that, uh, cancer is responsible for about sixty-one percent of the deaths among US firefighters. And in particular, there are certain cancers, um, that firefighters have two, three, or four times the likelihood of occurrence than the general population. And you've heard me talk about cancer prevention and some of the things that we've been trying to do in the, in the organization. In 2019, we got, uh, assistance, a firefighter grant, that did some cancer screenings, particularly around blood tests and cancer markers that could be found in the blood. Um, and that was a great step for us to start to create a baseline and understand if we had cancer risks within our, our staff. Um, the testing that, um, United Diagnostics does is imaging testing, ultrasound testing. I actually got one of these free tests at the Maine Fire Chiefs Conference this past year. Um, and the, the advantage of these early detection tests are, and what our ultimate goal is, is to identify if, if our firefighters have any of these. Many, many times, these cancers can go, can be asymptomatic for a long period of time. And then until they're developed to such an extent that, um, they're either fatal or career-ending for, for staff, firefighters and police officers. Uh, so the whole intent of the program is early detection, right? Find that stuff as early as you can. In most of the cases, in the hundreds of success stories that United Diagnostics have brought forward, uh, early detection has resulted in some form of biopsy and continued treatment and returned the employees to work, right? And that's our goal here, is to identify those risks early, um, before, you know, again, with the main cancer presumption law, these, many of these cancers are going to be presumed to be work-related. We want to get ahead of that. We want to detect it early for the well-being of our staff, but also knowing that that minimizes the exposure to the employer as well. Uh, so as I said, uh, some of the tests that they, uh, conduct, an echocardiogram, uh, carotid Doppler, abdominal, uh, they, they're doing imaging for, uh, aortic aneurysms, um, major blood vessels from your heart leading in both directions that, um, should they have weak spots and bulges that could rupture, they're almost untreatable and very near fatal. Um, so they're imaging for that. Um, they're doing, uh, looking for cancers in most of your abdominal organs, your bladder, um, testicles from, from men, um, major cancer, any of the major cancers that they can diagnose through imaging. We're getting a good look at and identifying if there's anything abnormal. My own personal experience with, um, the tests, I had a free test done this past March. There was a finding, um, on, in my thyroid, and I brought the, the, the whole testing report to my personal care physician, and he said, "Wow, Bob, where'd you get this done? This is thousands and thousands of dollars worth of testing." And, uh, so I told him about the program, and he was amazed that, that they could offer it, and they come to you to do it. And because of that finding, they were able to, my insurance was then able to start picking up a monitoring program to monitor my condition in my thyroid. Um, nothing to be alarmed about at this point, but they, they were able to get my insurance to pay for a regimen of getting that checked every two years. That would have never happened. I would have never had it on my radar to be watched, and my insurance certainly wouldn't have paid for that initial screening because there was no symptomology to require them to do that testing. So that's what we're really trying to achieve here, right, is to get early testing into our, our staff, give them reports that they can review with their personal care physicians, see if there's anything that's actionable, or at least needs to be monitored, and to allow us to keep people safe and get that early detection so that early treatment can occur. And this is, uh, this is important for us to, to get that early detection for both cardiovascular and cancer screenings for our first responders. And so with Sigma Tactical, for them to come in, uh, onsite and see all of our first responders, it offers the cardiac laboratory screening with all the advanced metabolic screenings that they do, coupled with the stress test on the bicycle with the EKG and whatnot. And to sit down, also work with nutritional and exercise recommendations for each of our first responders, that price tag is, uh, $799 per responder. And for the cancer screening, uh, as Chief Chase listed, all the screenings that they do, uh, that is $325, $325 per responder. And we will look at the totals. We also include our police officers in this cancer screenings as well because our officers are exposed to some of those same hazards the firefighters are, and not, um, not having nearly the same equipment that the firefighters do. So they've been exposed to some toxic environments, so we want to make sure we include, though, our police officers in that cancer screening as well because that's important for our continued health and early detection. We have a hundred and fifteen first responders in the city of Auburn between police and fire. And for the cardiac screenings, that works out to $95,000, and for the cancer screenings, it's almost $39,000, for a total of $133,765. And in discussions with the city manager, this type of wellness project does qualify for ARPA funding, and the city does have some ARPA funding left, uh, that you're going to be looking at here in the, in the next few months, so.
Thanks, Chiefs, and, uh, really want to thank Sigma for coming in, and, uh, Chief Moen and I got to spend some time with Vince and Sigma team in Colorado a few months ago, uh, talking about the program, talking about how we can make that, uh, work here in Maine and how the team could come in. Uh, we think that this is just really vital for our team. We'll work with, uh, some other communities as well, uh, that hopefully others will, will get on board with us when we move forward. What you'll see in, at the, uh, your next meeting, uh, we'll, we'll refine some of these numbers a little bit because I also want to talk about, and we'll talk through, uh, we do have turnover. We have people coming in, uh, want to make sure that we have enough there, at least to get the program initially started, but then also, how do we sustain it moving forward? Obviously, it's a big lift in the beginning, but then, uh, we'll be able to, um, probably have some of that set aside so that we could at least get, get new folks, um, brought on board. And, uh, so you'll see a couple options that'll come at you at the next meeting. One will be, uh, we'll be talking about, uh, the audit report. We'll talk about what we have, um, that's exceeding the current policy regarding fund balance and what you would like to do with that, as well as ARPA funding. So you'll have some options to consider at the next meeting. We'll have it during the workshop. Um, and then we'll, uh, we'll have this up for your vote, uh, at your first meeting in December.
Just a quick question, excuse me, just while we have the experts here. How often is this a once-every-five-year type of a screening program generally? Is this something that's done on a biannual, every couple of years?
I'll defer to Dr. Stone.
Absolutely. That's a great question. Recommend that once every twenty-
Twenty-four months, wasn't it?
Sorry, Dr. Stone, you cut out on that last part. Could you repeat the-
I'm sorry, yes, sir. Other year, so that'd be once every twenty-four month.
Two years. As, as a follow-up to every two years, is there a minimum age that we should be screening? Thirty, thirty-five, uh, fresh out of the academy at twenty-four?
Obviously, fresh out of the academy at twenty-four, my, the advance being a great, sir can definitely attest to that. Earlier, we can instill habits. It's, there's a slot there that are going to, that are going to screen cardiac illness.
Chief, maybe Vince can try.
Vince, can you try popping in? Um, Dr. Stone's pretty garbled on our end.
Oh, it's not, you, you couldn't pick him up there?
No.
Ben, try, try.
Me? Okay.
Yeah, you, you're definitely cutting in and out. I don't know if it's your-
Is that, is that any clearer?
Yeah.
That's better.
That's better. Okay, excellent. My, uh, air buds failed me when I need them. So we want to screen these individuals as young as possible every twenty-four months, and I know that, uh, Vince can, as a career law enforcement officer of thirty-plus years, um, he can definitely attest to the fact that the earlier we get to these individuals, um, the habits that we can instill can prevent development of downstream cardiac illness. Furthermore, in a lot of these circumstances, sixteen percent of circumstances, the individuals that present with early, early onset heart disease, and we're talking in the, in the late twenties to the mid-thirties, are usually due to genetic causes that we can uncover. And so these are individuals that would develop a heart attack earlier than the average age of a heart attack in law enforcement, which is age forty-five. It's sixty-five in civilians. These individuals that we see developing heart attacks in their late thirties and early forties are always identifiable in the late twenties, and it's usually genetic circumstances that's the culprit. So as early as we can get them, the more proactive we can be.
Come. Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, Chief, I can talk to you too about some other options we have in those, uh, in that, in that second year, so, some other, uh, options that we have, but, uh, as Dr. Stone said, the twenty-four months. And just an FYI, as he maybe alluded to, I went through the program, uh, probably seven years ago and was pretty shocked that some of my findings, just like, uh, the other chief, went through the cancer screenings. So, a huge proponent of the early detection, we've screened what, uh, Dr. Stone, close to fifteen thousand first responders, and the, uh, the evidence is overwhelming. So, you know, I commend both chiefs for thinking of their staff and their community and, and saying, "Hey, look, we, we, we have a, a program that can identify this stuff early and put our officers, our men and women in uniform on the right path to, uh, as I heard one of the chiefs say, you know, the goal is to obviously identify any risks, but then to, to, you know, increase that longevity and make them have a career where they're producing and they're working at their optimal." So I think it's a win-win.
Mayor, I would just add, I think first and foremost what we've heard here is that, um, early detection, early prevention, uh, that's really what we're, we're focused on. However, there is a, uh, fiscal responsibility that we have as a city, and the impacts of the presumption law are, are growing. And so we'll be providing you what that presumption law impacts has been, uh, on the city, uh, over the last couple of years already, um, as it has impacted our workers' comp. And so, uh, just so that you'll have, um, have some of that information as well as you look to say, do we make this early investment? Obviously, one, saving lives. Two, how is this helping the city in the long run? And you'll see that.
So we can work on getting this on the agenda for the second meeting in November? Or do we want, or the first-
Yeah, you'll have it at the workshop, second meeting, and then if the council agrees, it'll be voted in December.
Very good. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you very much. This is good.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Thank you, Vince.
Very good. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Council Communications, uh, to and about the community. I've just got a couple things here. First of all, there is an election tomorrow. Polls open at seven AM. Please go to auburnmain.gov, go under Elections and Voting tab, um, all your information on voter lookup. If you are confused about where you vote, go right there. Um, always call City Hall, they'll help you, and get out there and vote, okay? Now, moving on, uh, just two things. I'll turn it over to the city manager real quickly. Our tree lighting and grand opening of the Auburn Christmas Shopping Village, it's going to be held Friday, December- to be held Friday, December 1st. These festivities include the shopping village, now this is important, last year, we had the first annual shopping village at Festival Plaza. We're moving it to Anniversary Park, Anniversary Park in New Auburn. Okay, so it's going to be, everything's all set up, it's going to be lovely. The village will have local vendors set up in the little shops over three weekends in December. So you just watch our website and social media for more details. Same thing about holidays, it's hard to believe we're almost there. We're, we're going to have a holiday shopping event at the Hilton Garden. If you remember last year, we did this as an inaugural event, it was huge. Hundreds of people were there, I knocked out my Christmas shopping pretty much in one night. So the Hilton Holiday Hangout is going to happen, there's going to be snacks, local vendors, cash bar, music Thursday, November 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Hilton Garden Inn, right down here at Great Falls. Okay, that's it for my updates. Mr. Manager?
Yeah. Thanks Mayor, I just have a couple items. First, recycling, I just want to apologize to the city for the delayed start. We've been working with Casella on the curbside. Like any organization, there are workforce challenges. It took Casella a little while to get their workforce, stood back up to re-implement, certainly later than what we had anticipated. The, so the start date of curbside recycling will be Monday, November 27th. The curbside will be every other week, on the same day that your solid waste trash is collected. The week of the 27th, those individuals will be for Week A. And then the following week, Week B, there's a link on the website to be able to check which collection week you are in. But there'll also be an app that we'll be pushing out. We'll encourage everyone to log into that app. We believe that will be ready by November 20th. And so we'll push that out, you'll see some information on that. Once you push that out, your address is in that app, it'll recognize you, it'll tell you when your, your weight, your recycling's being picked up, it'll also give you any alerts that you might need. So that'll be coming out May, November 27th, Curbside Collection. Also, starting Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, our city electrician spoke with Council Walker regarding the St. Louis bells and had made a suggestion regarding the bells to be something to recognize the victims of October 25th in Lewiston. And so starting every Wednesday night for the next 18 weeks, there'll be 18 chimes at 7:00 PM for, at Anniversary Park in recognition of those who lost their life. So that will be beginning this Wednesday. Also, Council, you have two, two more meetings of this term. So November 20th, December 4th. Few things I just want to make sure that you're aware of, of what's coming up on the agendas. One, as I mentioned already, we'll be having a report from our auditors. They'll be coming in and presenting, they've met with the audit committee and presented the results there. They'll come before you with their report. We will talk about the fund balance overage and potential projects you may have in store for that, as well as ARPA funds. The Miller Street discontinuance will take place at the November 20th meeting. And your first and second reading for the Lake Auburn ordinances will be November 20th and December 4th. So those are just some of the highlights and things that are, that will be on the next two meetings. We will, certainly will want to make sure that those two meetings are meaningful for the rest of this term, but there are certain things that we'll not introduce if it's going to carry over into the next term, just because it'll be difficult for either folks coming in or, or folks that might be, that not, that are not continuing with us that we already are aware of. So, so that's where we are on, on the meetings. And I think the rest I'll save for the city manager report. I'll say.
Counselors, is there any other communication that's relevant over the next two weeks? Chair Counsel Staples?
Yeah, you already covered the election. I just wanted to thank our city clerk for all the hard work she's putting in on, on that. And I also just wanted to see if she puts it in the minutes that I thanked her.
Thank you for that. November 23rd, Thanksgiving dinner. I'm hoping that if you have no place to go for that day, that you'll come to the Auburn Seniors Community Center. We'll open the doors at 11:00 AM, that's Thursday. That'll be for your Thanksgiving dinner. We're asking that you give a donation of $5. This is put on by the Age Friendly Committee. We've been doing this now, I believe, four years. Please call the Recreation Department, their extension is 2101, and sign up for that. So I have some idea of how many people may show up that day. We will try to prepare enough food for everyone. The building only holds 300, so if I get that many people or over that, we may be in a little bit of a trouble. But please, sign up too, if you would, by November 20th, that would definitely help me out. So thank you everybody and come and have dinner with us if you have no other place to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been asked a lot of questions with the weather getting colder and nastier. How, where are we set for having places where people can go to get out of the elements? And how soon before we'll be able to have it on our website where people can go?
That's, we're still talking about that. I think hopefully we'll have something by the next meeting, some good alternatives for regional solutions to the regional problem.
Thank you.
And moving along, we're going to go to the first open session of the night now. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business which is not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address. And if you could, limit your comments to about three minutes. None being, I'll close that open session. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Next is ordinance 2-2-1-0-1, 62023. Amending the Auburn zoning ordinance, minimum dwelling size, it's a public hearing and second reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Staples, second by Counsel Haas. Open this up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, say your name, address, and if you could, limit your comments to about three minutes.
Is this on the CR?
No, sir, that is just on the size of minute, minimum dwelling units. At least that's next, okay. No public comment, I'm going to bring it back to council. Counsel, any debate on this? It passed the first reading last meeting. None? I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Not passed a six zero. Next is amending the Auburn zoning map area B changed from urban residential, suburban residential, and low density country residential to T4.2B. Public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counsel, Counsel Staples, Counsel Milks, just a reminder, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public would like to speak, they can step up to the podium and speak on this topic. And as a reminder, this did fail unanimously in the first reading, first vote.
Scott Crane, 271 Vicarry Road. I just want to reiterate what my fellow citizens and neighbors have said and, and impede you to vote no on this. We chose to be on the outskirts of the city, to enjoy the benefits that the city offers for services, but we like our land. Thank you.
If there's no other members of the public that would like to speak, I'm going to bring them back to the council now. You can speak.
My name is Pam Rousseau, 745 West Auburn Road. I just, I also encourage you to vote no. LDC, LDCR going to T42B is 16 units per acre, and I don't think that's right. This is not that type of area that needs to support basically downtown.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Just as a reminder, it did fail last vote, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote at this time.
Counselor Moran?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Counselor Staples?
No.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Haas?
No.
Counselor Milks?
No.
Motion fails and the order fails by vote of six zero. Next, we have a public hearing on the discontinuance and realignment of Miller Street. This is a continuance of the public hearing that was held on October 16th, 2023. Open this up to the public. Any members of the public like to speak, step up to the podium, give us your name and address, limit your comments to about three minutes. Just as a reminder, this is Miller Street, this runs behind, alongside the river, behind Rook Block, thank you. Nobody from the public? Okay, can I bring back counsel? Comment, questions? Actually, no, I'm not going to bring them back to council, just straight public hearing. That's right. So if there's no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. New business, Order 143-11062023, which is approving the discontinuance of Chestnut Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Staples, second from Counselor Moran. Open this up to the public for comment. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address. If you could, limit your comments to about three minutes. Chestnut Street is essential to be closed for the building of the new Powell Center. Nobody from the public? I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Counsel, any discussion? None being, ask for a vote. This is, I believe, the second vote on this, Ms. Clerk?
It's just one.
Just one, okay. We had public, okay, gotcha. Show of hands, all those in favor? All those opposed? Passes 5-1. Next is Order 144-11062023, amending the downtown omnibus Tiff number 10. It's a public hearing and a vote, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Staples, Counsel Moran on the second. Open this up to the public for a comment. Any members of the public like to speak, please step up to the podium. None being, we're bringing it back to the council. Counsel, any debate on this? None? Okay. As for a vote on a show of hands, all those in favor? All those opposed? Next is Order 145-11062023, allocating $10,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, to rebuilding together Lewiston Auburn, who will make necessary repairs to homes of those financially unable to do so. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Counsel Gary, second from Counselor Staples. I'm going to open this up to the public for comment. Anybody from the public like to speak? And Mr. Trask, David Trask, oh, you're already up. Mr. Trask actually is one that requested these funds on behalf of the organization when we got the email. So thank you very much for doing this.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of council. On behalf of the Board of Directors for Rebuilding Together Lewiston Auburn, as well as the low-income seniors and veterans that this, these funds will affect, we thank you for considering our request and I'm happy to answer questions that you have beyond what is already in the packet.
Okay, very good. If you could just have a seat right there, just in case we have some other detailed questions. Counsel, do we have any questions, comments, or debate? Counsel Gary?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, when you talk about homes, can it be, as long as the person lives in the house and it's their family home, if they have a second floor tenant, will they still qualify?
So they do need to live in their home, they need to own their home, they cannot be renters. That is one of the requirements that we have. The other one is an income requirement. Because we have limited funds, we try to focus those on those that are most in need. So through the application process, if they qualify, then yes, we will be looking to find volunteers within our organization and potentially paid contractors if necessary to assist.
Thank you.
I'd like to also, if this passes tonight, periodically come back and report to the council. Let us know how it's going and if more funds are needed. And, you know, so we want to keep in communication and actually probably help market some of this, A, for volunteers, as well as applicants as well that might need this assistance. And I do, and I would like to recommend and suggest, you know, coupling with our sustainability Auburn program, which can help get matching grants with efficiency main for energy efficiency upgrades. And that is, that was when we came up with it, ideally suited for rehabilitation projects. Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments, questions before we go to a vote? Counsel Staples?
Yeah, this is just a fantastic program. I'd like to commend you guys for the work you're doing and, and thank you, you know, this is, this is a very good use of our ARPA funds.
Okay, ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor of the ARPA allocation, please raise your hand. All those opposed, none being, passes six zero, thank you. Thank you. Go fix houses. Will do. Okay, this is the last open session of the night. Remember, again, members of the public are invited to speak on any issue that is not on tonight's agenda, that is city business, of course, please give us your name and address. And if you could, limit our comments to about three minutes. None being, I'll close this open session. Going to move on to reports. Whoa, 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 where? Oh, sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager. I'm Chaplain Eddie Gray Fox Burgess, and I just ended a Zoom session with the State Coordinating Committee of Veterans Services. I just wanted to come before you as the town mothers and town fathers to urge veterans to come out to the Auburn Mall in a few days, on the 9th, for a Hire a Vet Campaign and Resource Fair. Because of the things that have transpired in our community recently, the clergy, all the chaplains have gathered at the Congregational Church, that's where we're based here in Auburn, and we've been working with the chaplains from the FBI and other folks in collaborating services. Again, the VA will be out at the mall, so we want people to know that. The Green Ladle will be having lunch on the 8th, and of course, we will have many resources at the Fall Festival that we do at Cabela's. So if folks want to come out and get services or check on benefits or get some free assistance, they can come out. And if they just want to come and have coffee and chat because of all the things that have gone on in the world, they can come and chat. And there's many services for any active duty soldiers as well. And we are outreach to them in the units and making sure that everybody's all set and squared away. But if you find somebody, send them our way. Thank you very much, God bless, have a great night.
No, thank you. Okay, going to move on to reports. Actually, one of them was a little add-on to November 8th, so thank you for bringing that up. November 8th, Auburn Exchange Club will be having a free, their annual free veterans' lunch at the Green Ladle in Lewiston. If you're a veteran, come and join me. Counselor Haas, I expect to see you there for the free lunch. And it's great, get about 150 to 175 veterans show up. So maybe I'll drag the manager too, he's another veteran, he deserves a free lunch. So that's always a good time, so please, November 8th, 11:30, Auburn, excuse me, the Green Ladle in Lewiston. Couple other real quick reports. School board had a meeting on Wednesday. You'll notice that this will come up in conversations that we have concerning fund balances and the overage we have in the fund balance, which is substantial, I said on the audit committee, and decisions will have to be made. Some of those decisions are happening and we're reallocating money to long-term beneficial, a, to long-term benefit, increasing the reserve funds for maintenance to ensure the new every little, as well as the other schools are properly maintained, and they don't have to keep coming back into our CIP in years forward, asking for money for general maintenance obligations. So that's a huge positive, I'm glad we're doing that. We're also going to be looking at curriculum, doing the same thing, so there's no fiscal cliff in five years when curriculum needs to be changed or modified, and that can be expensive, believe it or not. And also, I just wanted to say that the, the Victims Resiliency Center will be opening up on the 13th at 184 Main Street in Lewiston. Okay, so if anybody's watching as part of what happened on October 25th, you know, please keep a lookout for news on that, there is a lot of support services coming to help folks together on that. That's my report. City councilors, anything to report on your committees or subcommittees? None being, Ms. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I just have a couple last items first. Related to the October 25th incident, I just want to thank our, our team of, in Auburn. I think our staff just did an outstanding job collaborating, coming alongside the city of Lewiston. You know, I had several items that I was going to highlight, I, I won't go through all that now, what I'll probably do is provide a report in the future, but just, just a couple of things just for you to be aware of. You know, immediately, our
You know, immediately, our first responders were on scene at both sites. Both fire, EMS, police services, and then our outstanding communications team at the Lewiston Auburn 911. Just so you have an idea of what that evening looked like. Between 7:00 PM and midnight, the 911 center had handled over 712 calls that they had to field. We normally staff up the 911 center with four, four dispatchers. Immediately, the director and assistant director had come in, took a couple of the seats, as well as bringing some other off-duty dispatchers in. There were 254 911 calls during that time, as well as close to 500 phone calls on the business line. That's a huge lift for any dispatch center. And I believe the director had shared during that time, if 911 calls do not get answered after a certain amount of rings, it kicks to another PSAP station. During that entire time, only one call was transferred to another PSAP station and delayed. There's a bit of a delay in that process, or they're speaking with someone outside of the region. So, just a huge kudos to that, to that team and what they were able to do there. The Police Department had over 80% of the department, this is a 55 sworn agency, 80% of their officers were on scene, providing services within, within a few hours of the incident. And Chief Moran was the incident commander at one of the scenes. Chief Chase did an outstanding job. I know both of them have left, but both of them did an outstanding job providing command services, EMS services. We had EMS. Our ambulance was on-site for multiple days following with our tactical teams that were going out. That's a big lift for, for our rescue teams. They just did an outstanding job, I can't say enough. From that date, and, you know, several days afterwards, I was in constant contact with the city administrator from Lewiston. We probably spoke three, four, five times a day in some of those days. But just whatever we could provide, we were able to open up the reunification center at the Auburn Middle School. School staff was there within 20 minutes, meeting the mayor and myself as we, as we got that, that building opened, and we were able to get a team in place. Assistant city manager came in, helped with that, as well as Dennis Dotte from Public Services. You know, there was no team coming. It was, we had to create a team to, to work with that reunification. And I think the team did an outstanding job, doing the best that we can. You know, certainly recognize Counsel Walker and his tragic loss of, of his son. Counsel Walker was right there with us, connecting with families. That was a big piece, connecting with families, seeing whatever we could do. In those kind of situations, we know that there's nothing but just being there and listening, and those are the things that took place. So, I just wanna thank our team at the end of already very, you know, stressful several days, then having the president come in, fly into Auburn. That involved a great deal of our staff. We had just done this less than 100 days ago. So, the team was well familiar with the White House staff and the team that comes in for that. That worked seamlessly. You know, the Auburn team was able to escort the motorcade throughout the area. Just, just endless support. Each department reaching out to another department that might have a heavier lift that day and just coming alongside them. I really wanna thank Jennifer Edwards is our, she's our public health manager for the city of Auburn. Jennifer really stepped in and made the collaboration and the connections with our Tri-County Mental Health, SWEETSER, to make sure that we had folks that are just coming alongside individuals, those that were trained for a crisis. We had Tri-County Mental Health teams in Auburn Hall on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We had several staff members that were impacted as a result of this, just like the rest of the community. But we did ensure that we had services. We also had SWEETSER come to the PAL Center. We had several, you know, we have over 100 students at the PAL Center on any given day. So, having SWEETSER there to just come alongside kiddos that were experiencing all of this like we all were. And, but being there to listen and help and provide support was, was tremendous. I'm sure there'll be more information that comes as we go. I, I asked the team to give me a list of the businesses that just supported citizens, families, and others. And I'm a very, I'm afraid, I was going to read them, but I'm afraid to do so because I know I will miss someone. Because every time we looked at it, we were adding another business. That's just how many businesses just, didn't, we didn't have to call, they just showed up. And they were there. And, and, you know, I also wanna recognize the, the police chaplain for East Auburn Baptist Church. He was at the reunification site, someone that's trained in chaplaincy, work. I recognize our chaplain that came and spoke earlier, just the work that they do. But having, having that resource and having them there at the center was really, really helpful for those families that were, were coming to either reunify or that was, some of them, that was a strong indication that they would not reunify with their family members. So, so just an outstanding response and a team for such a tragic loss for our community. But I just wanted to just take a minute, just to let you know how proud I am of the, of the team and the work they did, and our community. So, many members of the community called and said, what do you need help with? What's, you know, what's going on? As well as this team up here, I, I connected with, with the councilors throughout this and just knowing that the councilors were there and ready to support. On Thursday, we had many congressional and delegates that were here, as well as councilors, as well as the governor. This was the spot for them to come, not be, not feel like they were in the way of what's happening in Lewiston, what was happening in Lewiston City Hall. So, we offered this space for them to come, have office space, be able to be available as decisions were being made. And so, this was, this whole second floor ended up turning into a space for them. So, and I think that was helpful for them to be able to come, and their staff, to be able to, to set up shop here at Auburn Hall. So, with us being closed, we were able to do that. Those are just a few of the highlights. I'm sure I missed a great deal with everything that was happening. But I just wanna thank, again, this council, the mayor, the community, and, and then our employees, who really, really stepped up and, and did everything that we could possibly do. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Manager, and let me echo that. I mean, I was here with the manager, rock, rock-solid staff. Everybody from senators to the governor, her staff, and a lot of other folks commented about the professionalism that happened within Auburn Hall and outside of. And just one little note, when I was writing with the president Friday in the motorcade, the lead vehicles were Auburn Police Department. And I saw that, smiled, talked to them afterwards. They're pretty proud of leading the president through Auburn and Lewiston. So, it's just any good indicator of the professionalism that they have, so. Moving along, that was it. Executive sessions, none. At this point, I am gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counsel Moran, do I get a second?
Second.
Second from Counsel Hawes. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, don't say anything. We are now adjourned. Thank you very much.